For a special, seeking a permit for dimensional variations from the lot width through the building requirements and a dimensional variation to construct duplex because of the exceeded 10% of the area regarding wetland areas. Before we continue, well, I'll read this. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be available to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to Zoom meeting. Computer and app uses me, use the raise hand feature to request to speak. As I introduce the board, to my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. To my, I'm Jim Bezakarsky, Vice Chairman. On my right are Hans Winthrop, Pat Callahan, Nick De Castro, and Steve Dubois. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. Please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you were at the mic. There will be a public comment period. Please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Please address all comments and questions to the board. After that, there will be a period of deliberations. Before I read the required findings for any special permits, I want to mention that Hans Winthrop will not be a voting member tonight. So the vote will be required for four of us otherwise remaining in unison for a complete acceptance of the findings. And the special permit or variation, two variational dimensional requirements, the required findings are: One, the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Two, the specific site is an appropriate location for such building or alteration. Three, the proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. Four, the granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Five, the granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, or other amenities. And six, there will be no nuisances nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Finally, the board may impose any conditions deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of this bylaw. Okay. Is there anything else that I forgot, Lisa? Yes, before we do anything else, do you, would the applicant like to move forward knowing that there's only four people able to vote on this? And it must be a full majority? Yes, is noted, okay. Are there any questions from anyone before we move on and Lisa reads the notes? Okay, Lisa, if you will, please.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation. The name and address of the applicant is Phil Colometta of Colometta Corporation, 524 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows: Seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to construct a duplex. In all districts, wetlands cannot exceed 10% of the required lot area. In addition, there's also the continuance from the lot width through building, just so everybody's clear. There's actually two items before the board tonight. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found on the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Section 250-5.1A. The street address of the property is 1207 Mass Ave in Lunenburg, and the assessor's map is 61 parcel 23. The name and address of each legal holder to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Stanley N. and Marie Barney of 1236 Massachusetts Avenue of Lunenburg. The deed is recorded into Western Northern District Registry Deeds Book 3384, Page 121, and recorded May 7, 1999. And that is signed by Philip Colometta on February 6, 2024, 524 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. There is a list of abutters attached. There is a site plan, and there is a memo from the building commissioner. Hello, recently, there have been some inquiries regarding the hearing this coming Wednesday regarding the relief you are seeking at 1207 Mass Ave. I've since received a copy of a plan that delineates wetlands on the lot. Per Section 250-5.1A, wetlands or land underwater. In all districts, no more than 10% of the required lot area, as defined in this Article 5, shall consist of wetlands or land underwater. The plans do not show the actual area of land that has been delineated as wetlands. Given the required lot area of 40,000 square feet, you should require at least 36,000 feet of non-wetlands area to be a conforming lot. You should be prepared to address this at the ZBA hearing this week. I then, I then received a message from Mr. Colometta via his engineer. Hi, Phil, parcel 61-23 has 11,826 square feet of delineated wetlands that were flagged by Matt Morrow on December 20, 2023. Please let me know if you have any questions or need anything else. Thank you, Chris. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
I would like to note that in the discovering of various facts, this property has lost its grandfathering because of common ownership for about 13 months. And we have copies of the the original deed, the common ownership, and a picture of the property that originally was owned or by the properties in question. So at that, I'd like to open it up and see if there's any other questions or comments that you would like to make, Mr. Colometta, or followed by anyone else.
Good evening. Phil Colometta, 524 New West Townsend Road, Lunenburg. What was the last statement you had just made about the grandfather lot? What was that?
They lost, because of common ownership for about 13 months.
Okay, I missed the part you said, the lost part. I just didn't hear that. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Would you like to see any of these?
No, I'm fine.
Copy of the deed.
Yeah, yeah. So we adapted the plan to work around the newly discovered wetlands. We're not crossing wetlands. We're not asking for a waiver. We're not asking for any variance of anything from the conservation. We're, we're, we positioned the property or the potential build outside. We'll be filing a notice of intent, but we're not within the 50 feet notice of error. So at face value, the concept, the wetlands or conservation committee wouldn't be asked for any type of variance. So the variance that we're asking for is the dimensional variation of the 10%. It appears that we have 11,826 square feet of wetlands, and it's, we did the math. But in past, the ZBA has approved on 22 Boucher Road in 2018, they applied for a dimensional variation for a, the lot width, the frontage of a lot, which was, the, the folks had 28 and a half feet in their district. They needed 50 feet. The, the board at that time granted that dimensional variation for the special permit. And if you did the math, that's like 43% relief that was granted. We're essentially, if you come down to numbers, we're, we're a little, we're a lot less than that. We're at like 17% relief, if you do the math. So we're over 10%. We are aware of that. There's not going to be any impact on the, the reserve area. We're not affecting the wetlands in any way. And again, on the other touch on the lot width, you know, they still have the sewer stub that's been paid for. The town sees it as a buildable lot, taxes as a buildable lot. There's an existing paved apron off Mass Ave, the state road, that we're using in the plan that where we potentially will build. I guess we'd like to leave as if this doesn't get approved. It's just going to be a vacant parcel that's not really beneficial to the town, and it's nearly not providing any entry level homes to the, to the neighborhood or the city, or the town. What else do I have? And then, so if we do the math, 27% of what we're asking for, for the relief, that leaves us about 30,000 square feet of uplands. In the past couple of years, there's been three, we, we did a quick search, but there's been three buildings or new construction homes that have been built on much smaller lots. For instance, 37 Woodland was, it was a parcel of land that was sold in 2006, and it was built in 2019, and it only had 22,000 square feet. So we're, we're not even that small of a, an area. So we're much larger in square footage to build on. Any questions of myself?
Any questions from the board? Any comments from the board? Thank you. Any comments from the board or questions in general?
I have one question, really quick. I was trying to dig through here. What's the square footage of the lot now, dude? Is it like 42 and change?
Yeah, 42.6, 42,643.
Okay. So you need, so you, under that, you need 4,264 is exempt, right? Because that's the 10%.
It's 4,000 square feet. So it's 10% of what's required in the zone.
Right, so I have the, the lot as 42,643. So 10% of that is 4,264. So that's, that's the 10%. So that's your threshold. So that leaves you with 38,379 of non-wetlands. So that would be, in an ideal world, that's what you have. But you don't have that. You have 11,826 square feet of wetlands. So that drops you down to 30,817. So you're, you're off on your wetlands by a lot. Because if, and I'm not a math major, but if you did the math, you subtracted what you, I mean, my main concern is like, I think we talked about this last time. I can see, you know, we're going by what the bylaw says, right? And our job is to interpret the bylaw. So the bylaw says that you, you must have 175 feet in your residence area, your district. You only have 125, which is really, you're seeking relief for about 28 and a half percent from that requirement. But I think the bigger one now, now that we have the wetlands, is the fact that you're way over the limit, almost twice over the limit of what you should have. So you should really only have 4,000. You have 11,000. So if I did my math, you know, you're, you're well over 100% more than what you, more wetlands than what you should have on the, on the, on the piece of property. And I understand that you're trying to move it up front and not touch the wetlands. But, you know, when we discuss, you know, wetlands in all districts, no more than 10% of the required lot area, you're going to be well over that. And then, you know, the findings of the special permit dimensional variation is that, like, the number one requirement is that you don't segregate from the intent of the bylaw. You know, these guys put the bylaw in place, and we're here to interpret it. I'm having a hard time, I, I had a hard time with the lot width because you got a non-conforming lot that lost its grandfather clause. So you, you're not protected. You have to go underneath, like, what's today's rules are. But the wetlands is way over what you really should have. And I think that's, that's the issue I'm having. I'm sorry, what was that? I was looking at this.
That was just a memo from Brian from the.
Okay.
If you didn't see it.
No, I don't think I saw it, but, yeah. Yeah, so the lot contains significant wetlands area that result in the lot only containing 30,000. Yeah, so that's what I have, 30,800 square feet of non-wetlands. So, I mean, do you want to, do you want to discuss that? I mean, I don't know, kind of deviates from the intent, you know, what we're trying to do, the harmony and, and the bylaw. And I, I guess I'd have to say to the board, you know, this opens up a can of worms, too. Like, so the next person who comes down that doesn't have 10% is going to be saying, hey, you know, you gave it to this person, you got to give it to me. I just think that, you know, people put the rules in place, they did. We're just interpreting it. But I think, I think you're okay on, I would say, you, you might be all right on the lot width, but now with the numbers that you have on the, on the wetlands, I just, I'm concerned that that's way over.
That's why this bylaw is in place for a special permit for dimensional variation.
Correct, but that doesn't, but, but still, even really what you really should be coming, personally, I think it should be a variance, which would be even tougher to get because it's a self-inflicted hardship on the property. Whoever cut the property out wasn't really thinking about the wetlands or, or the lot width, because they have neither.
Well, they did that prior, they did it in 1971, or 69.
Right.
Before, when, when the bylaw was only 125.
Right, and then when you lost the, the grandfather, it kicked it back up to 175.
Correct, but they did it with intentions of 125.
Well, I understand that. I understand that, but once you lose the grandfather, you're no longer protected. You know, your status.
Correct, yeah.
You lose your status.
Just like in 2018, Boucher Road only had 28 feet of frontage, and it was required 50, and there was a discussion of it, and the same idea. It's a lot, the, the, the relief was a lot with variation, dimensional variation.
No, I think, and, and that's what it's there for, because the variance is much harder to get. And so Lunenburg is one of only a few towns that has a special permit dimensional variation that allows you to go between a special permit. Because special permit, I mean, in this particular instance, I think you're really looking on the wetlands, you're looking for a variance on the, on the, through the lot width. I think you could get away with a special permit dimensional variation. But I just think, for me personally, the wetlands throws it way over. I mean, you've got, you're only allowed 4,264. You've got 11,000. That's almost twice as much wetlands than you're supposed to have. And I just think that doesn't go against the intent of the bylaw.
Well, I think, I think it does, because it's, we're looking for relief of the percentage that I have. Just like the lot width is 175, current bylaw, and 125 is what I have, I'm looking for the relief of the 50 feet or so, plus or minus. Same with the, the wetlands. Dimensional.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments from the board or questions?
Do I understand correctly that you don't own this property yet?
Correct.
Do you have a purchase agreement?
Purchase and sale agreement, yep.
I couldn't hear that answer.
It's under purchase and sale agreement.
Oh, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Or comments? If not, I'll open it up to public discussion. If there, anyone from the audience would like to speak, please come forward.
Thank you.
And state your name and address.
Oh, this is Bob Pizam on Zoom.
Oh, you want to take the Zoom question first?
Yes, go ahead. We'll take the.
Actually, I'm driving there. I'll be there in like one minute, and so, uh, you need to take in mind that this.
Okay.
He said he's on his way here.
Oh, okay.
Someone's on the way here, so. My name is Michael Barney. My address is 44 Placid Bay Drive in Plymouth, Mass. But I'm speaking on behalf of my sister. My former residence was 1183 Mass Ave, Lunenburg, which is almost directly across the street from this property. I'm speaking on behalf of my sister, who's in the audience here, 1264 Mass Ave, Lunenburg. So could I ask the board a couple of questions? Is that appropriate?
Uh, yes, you may. You direct them through me.
Okay, so, so my, my first question is around, is around the grandfathering, because this property was owned by my parents and then passed to my brother and sister, and then my brother passed away and, and is now my sister's property. So I'm curious on how grandfathering, how that property would not be grandfathered in if it's a family line and that deed is never passed outside of the, of the family. So that would be my first, just looking at, I'm just trying to make some sense of losing the grandfathering, because this property was split from my parents. When my parents owned both parcels and owned a whole parcel, and they split it in 1968, it would seem logical that the grandfathering for the, for the width would still be in place because it never transferred, the deed never transferred outside the family. So, so that's just one comment. You know, I don't know if you have the answer to that question, but that would just be one comment I would like to just bring up to the board since, since my understanding was that the property was split before 1972, and that's the benchmark for the, for the dimensional piece. And, and just in support of the, of the builder's recommendation, no, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a surveyor, but just looking at the map, I understand protecting the wetlands, but the wetlands do seem to be in the, in the rear corner of the property, and the, and the design of what he wants to do seems to be towards the front. And then the third, just comment I would make is, when the sewer line went by, my sister and my brother, you know, have been paying taxes with the understanding that at some point that there would be, that would be a buildable property, and there is a sewer tee right in front of that property. So if that was intended to be, you know, not used to be a building lot, then I guess, I guess the assumption would be if that, if I owned that property and there was a sewer line, you know, serving that property, that at some point in the future, it would be accessible to be built upon. So I would just hope that, you know, I, I watched the last meeting on Zoom. I wasn't, I, I wasn't under the assumption that this, this whole thing was going to be discussed last time. I thought there was going to be a continuance. But I, I know that came up, and I know that was part of your discussions as well. So I would hope as you're considering whether or not you're going to approve this, this whole thing, that, you know, the family all along, knowing that there was sewer access to this property, I, I think the underlying hope was that it would be able to be developed at some point. So I would hope that the board and their deliberations would keep that in mind. So, so if you, if you could, we'd like to know the answer to that question. I don't know if you have it, Chair Bezakarsky.
With regards to the loss of grandfathering, it seems that there's a record of ownership here that shows that Stanley and Marie Barney had common ownership for about 13 months with, I believe it's a Heather Fix or something like.
That's the neighbor.
Oh.
That's, no.
Oh, okay. Around 1999, and there was com, difference of ownership for about 13 months, and.
Difference of ownership from who?
I, I didn't do the research. Al Gravell, who is chairman and unable to attend tonight, did the research and gave me all this information.
The property has never been out of the Barney family since the 1950s.
I, I think what Jim's trying to say, if you don't mind if I interject, so it went from Wilbur and Therese
Correct.
to Stanley and Marie
Correct.
in 1997.
Correct.
So it's still in the family, but it's not the same people.
So, so the deed, so the deed transfer takes away the grandfathering clause? Is that what the board is saying? Or that was, is that what the law is saying? This is my question.
I think that's probably a building inspector question, but I did ask the building inspector after the last hearing. I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
And that was one of them. And this is what he sent me via email. This is a vacant lot that was once held in common ownership with a lot next door, so it's lost its protected status. Thus, the issues with the usable lot area and the lot width through the building. That was his reply to me when I asked him what was going on with the lot. Was it grandfathered, was it not grandfathered? So that was his response to me, because I wanted clarification after the last meeting, especially with the stub running by, or running by.
Right, yeah, because I heard those, that discussion at the last meeting.
Right, and one would think, right, that it would be, but according to the building inspector, the lot has lost its grandfathering. So that's the, one of the reasons why you're here before us, or the applicant's here before us.
Sure.
So, so you have that, 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 you know, decision from the building inspector, his interpretation of what that lot is now. And then, you know, of course, obviously, you've been hearing the other two issues are the lot width and then the wetlands.
Right, but, but that's the, what you're describing right there is the lot width question, right? Because that, if, if that decision came indifferently, the lot width would be grandfathered, correct? Is that the discussion that you, that the board was having last time? That was the lot width question, because the lot width.
Yeah, because the wetlands didn't even come up last time, the last hearing. The wetlands came up at the very end of it.
Right, right.
And that's the reason why we're here today, partly is because we needed to clarify how much wetlands was on the property.
Right, but it would seem to me that if that property, those, those parcels were separated in 1960, or before 1972, so just because one parcel was sold, it wouldn't seem logical to me that the parcel that remained would not be still grandfathered. I, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make logic of this.
I don't think anybody on the board can answer that. I think it's a building inspector question, because I had to ask him myself, because I like his guidance as to, you know, what's, what's going on here with this, with this lot.
Right, right, okay. Thank, thank you for clarifying. But that might be a question to continue to pursue if it comes down to that. So thank you for your time.
Would anyone else from the board like to make a comment or ask a question?
Can I ask, sorry, you just sat down.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if you know the answer to these. So 1997 was the transfer?
That's what this deed or paper says, yes.
Okay, do you know when sewer was put in? I, my head says like early 2000s.
I think it was around.
I worked at the pizza shop right there.
Yeah, I think it was late, and I, I'd have to, I could Google it probably, but, but I, I lived, I lived right on the corner there. So it was, I lived at 1183 when it was going by the house, so it was, it was probably around 97 or 98.
Okay.
I'm guessing. But don't hold me to it. I'd have to check.
Yep.
But I remember the lot of construction, right when we were moving in, so.
Are there any other questions or comments of Mr. Barney or anyone else? Okay, we'll open it back up to public discussion. First.
Bob P is 11 Winter Green Court. I'm a longtime member of the Conservation Commission, but I'm here speaking as a private individual. I hope you grant this special permit. To me, this lot was created, you know, it was approved by the town. You got a sewer stub, you got a driveway cut. It exists. It certainly conformed when it was made. You know, the fact that it had common ownership, you know, that both parcels were in the Barney family and that it lost its grandfathering, I have a hard time with that. It doesn't seem like it's fair to the family. Are you going to turn around and give the family back all the taxes? They've paid on this as a building out all these years. Are you going to turn around, you know, and repay them the betterment for the sewer stub that they've paid? It seems to me like if you, you have, in my humble opinion, at least a moral obligation. uh, to take and, you know, uh, fulfill the town's obligation to honor this as a building lot, uh, since, uh, you know, uh, you know, they've, the owners have paid on it, you know, as if it was, was a building lot. And if it's not a building lot, then what is it? It's just going to be vacant land. Um, uh, those are just my humble opinions, and, uh, I came down to share them.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Um, any other comments from, uh, Mr. Barney?
Uh, Mr. Tal hands, uh, the answer to your question, we just got it.
Oh.
Two thousand and five was when, uh, the family started paying the betterment.
Okay, so early two thousands was construction.
Early two thousands was the construction, so.
Yeah. And then oh-five.
I was off by a few years, but.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Um, further comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
It's just me and public access.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Yep.
Or questions? Okay.
Hello, Heather Carboni, fourteen Moran Heights, Fitchburg, Mass. Um, I was a listing agent for the piece of land at twelve oh seven Mass Ave, which we did list based on public record and information from the town, that it was residential developable land. We did list it for buyer to do due diligence to establish whether or not they actually could build a house on that lot, um, but we did advertise that it did have a sewer stub, with a betterment that's been paid by the sellers. As the previous, uh, guest speaker mentioned already, that seller, the owners, the Barneys, have been paying property taxes as if it is buildable. They've been paying a betterment to tie into town sewer, um, so those are certainly signs that a normal person, like a layperson, would say there's going to be a house there at some point in the future. Um, meeting with the Barneys to sell this parcel is really the first step for them to settle the estate of their brother that recently passed. It has created financial hardships for them in trying to move this along a little bit quicker. So they would like to have this wrapped up and be able to at least start the process to settle that estate the best way that they can moving forward. The Barneys are a well-known family in town. They've given a lot back to the community here. Stan's unexpected passing did create an unexpected hardship for them to have to settle things like the sale of this land. So we expected everything to go smooth, so we're trying our best to do one step at a time and see how we can alleviate what's been brought up here in terms of the variance needed for the width, as well as the wetlands issue. Um, just one other comment. I didn't know, uh, Phil had mentioned earlier about thirty-seven woodland. Was it correct to say that that was a twenty-two thousand square foot lot that had been new construction?
Twenty-two thousand square feet, yeah.
Okay, so if it, is it safe to assume that a new construction home was approved by the board for a twenty-two thousand square foot?
Please, if you're going to make comments, don't have it between the two of you. Have them directed up through the board.
It sounds like Phil had mentioned a new construction lot was approved for thirty-seven woodland in two thousand nine on a twenty-two thousand square foot lot. Based on that, and then if we compare to twelve oh seven Mass Ave, which has forty-plus thousand, and we're talking about the ten percent wetlands, even if you take away what's been identified as wetlands on twelve oh seven, it would still be more than what another house was approved for at twenty-two thousand square feet. So if a previous new build was approved for only twenty-two thousand square foot lot, even if you take what's been presented here tonight on the survey for wetlands delineated at more than ten percent, what's remaining as non-wetlands seems to be still more than what another house was approved for on twenty-two thousand square feet.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, or anything else?
The only thing I would say is that, um, I, I can't recall what you're, what you're bringing up, and I, I'd like to review it, but.
The thirty-seven woodland?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, every applica- application stands on its own merit. So I can't, you know, twenty-two thousand, there might have been variables or reasons why, but in this particular instance, you've got three strikes that get you, you know, you've got, uh, um, non-grandfathered, so it's no longer grandfathered piece of par- parcel.
Well, that's arguable from our perspective.
True. That's, yeah, and understandable. That's why you're up here. That's why you're there, and we're here.
It honestly sounds like the building inspector, one person's opinion as interpreting that is not taken into account.
But the building inspector is the zoning, you know, the zoning enforcement.
Enforcement.
Yeah, so like, we go to him and say, hey, you know, what's the deal with this property? He comes back and says, I don't question it, because he knows the rules and regulations.
Maybe we need to question it, considering this is an extenuating circumstance of a family-owned property. The property is not sold from Joe to Billy to Sally. It's stayed within the Barney family, so it doesn't seem fair, it doesn't seem right that that wouldn't be taken into account when this one person, the building inspector, is making that decision. It seems like there should be some leeway there. Again, just our opinion, but it seems like there should be some leeway, or maybe some conversation with him, if he's the one determining factor that says it doesn't matter if it's family to family, you lost the grandfathering in.
Thank you for your opinion. Comments?
Question?
Yes.
So you mentioned thirty-seven woodland? Is this one with?
I think it's woodland. Mm-hmm.
Woodland.
Woodland?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a single family or duplex?
Single.
So he's asking to put a duplex on this property?
Mm-hmm.
From a single to duplex, so he's, he's asking more and he has less, right?
Well, the, I believe that the reason, and Phil can speak to this too, but the original plan was to do a single, um, but then when other issues were brought up with this, he adjusted that to make it a duplex. So if the board is willing, if you're willing to hear back on a single, that would be between you and Phil, you and the buyer. But it's not like he came in initially and said, I want to do a duplex. The original plan was to do a single.
Should we ask Phil?
He implied it's a duplex.
This was an application for a duplex, so we have to make our decision on the application as requested.
And it is allowed.
And it is allowed. And it's in the same footprint of what the single family was. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we know this ten percent wetlands restriction, if, if that's the right word? Where did that come from? I mean, is that part of the Wetlands Protection Act, or is it unique to the Lunenburg bylaw, or?
Somewhere, I would think somewhere.
I just sent it down. It's, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it's in our bylaw.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't know where they came up with the ten percent.
And did we, did I read somewhere that we had an opinion from town council that said?
We may grant, um, a, a special permit or variance in regards to that, yes.
Okay.
But was that in, was that in regard to both?
Yes.
Wow, okay. So if we're going on that, then I think we've got to rely on the fact that it says here that we, yeah, no more than ten percent of the required lot area. And I go back to the findings when this board puts a, you know, a, uh, decision forth, that if a special permit to very dimensional requirements that required findings are, the number one requirement is that, uh, you know, the permit be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the bylaw. I would think if that, this piece of parcel is at a hundred and seventy-seven percent more wetlands than what they're allowed, I would say that derogates from the, the intent of the bylaw. They've got more than, close to two hundred percent more than wetlands than what they should have on that, that property.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
On the, on that is, they're asking for twenty-three percent wetlands. The bylaw is.
It can't be twenty-three percent, because they're, they're, they have a, they have forty-two hun- let's say forty-two hundred. If you, so forty-two hundred would be a hundred percent. You add another forty-two hundred on there, that's, that's like eight hundred, that's two hundred percent. They're, they're at, uh, seven thousand something, so it's like a hundred and seventy-seven percent of more wetlands than what they should have. They did the math.
I'm just reading from the building inspector.
The math is a little weird, because.
The lot contains significant.
They're only allowed forty-two hundred. They've got eleven thousand. So if you, if you do the math, it's almost twice as much wetlands than what they're allowed. It's not an easy decision either, by the way.
I know.
Yeah.
Can I also, I just, I just want to mention this, that the, the item about the, um,
Grandfathering?
Grandfathering. That's not, like, I, I think maybe it's coming off as the building inspector's like being the judge and the jury. I, I think that it is like, like, I think he's just checking all the boxes. He's not like making, making that up, like, just on, on his own.
I think the question for us would be, is that arguable? In this specific instance, would that be arguable to say the Barney family has owned it continuously?
Uh, yes, I mean, yeah, anything is, yes. Oh, yes, it's definitely, as anything is. Um, I just don't want to talk about it and sound like, you know, that I'm casting shade at somebody.
Mm-hmm.
But it, it's, it's, um, yeah. I'm just trying to understand his, in his memo here, he said the request for the relief is twenty-three percent.
Do you want me to read the memo?
I read it, but I'll be happy to read it again.
Unless I'm, am I, am I reading that wrong?
I think, I think the math is wrong, because if you added twenty-three percent to, to the four thousand that they need, it's, it's.
Lisa will read the memo from the, um, building inspector. Again.
Keep in mind, this is the amount required lot area to be composed of wetlands, the ten percent. In this case, it's required to have thirty-six thousand square feet of non-wetlands, lot area to be ten percent or less. The lot contains significant wetlands area, and the result is that the lot only contains thirty thousand eight hundred square feet of non-wetlands based on the request for relief of up to twenty-three percent. So forty-three, uh, forty thousand times point seven seven equals thirty thousand eight hundred. The calculation is solely based on the info provided in the filing. And the bylaw says, "The purpose of two fifty dash five point one is to define all dimensional regulations relatable to allowable lot area, width, frontage, including dimensional regulations for all districts, and to clarify the regulations for dwellings per lot, lot size exemptions, and reduction of occupied lots. Wetlands or land underwater in all districts, no more than ten percent of the required lot area as defined in this article five, shall consist of wetlands or land underwater."
May I make?
You may.
Yes.
If, if you're saying they need thirty-six thousand from what you just read, and they're at thirty thousand, that means it's eighty-five percent compliance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments on that?
So the lot, so we're basically, there's a different differential of fifteen percent between where he is right now and where we need to be for the wetlands compliance.
Not correct.
I disagree with that.
Eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six is twenty-eight point one percent of forty-two thousand.
So how I did it, just so you can check me on this, I, what Lisa just read is thirty-six thousand square feet is what they need for minimal compliance. What they have is thirty thousand, correct?
Thirty thousand eight hundred.
Eight hundred. So I took thirty thousand eight hundred and divided it by thirty-six thousand, and it comes up to eighty-five percent. So that's the percent.
No, but that thirty-six thousand, that, that is incorrect, because he, that was roughly just based on, I think, a forty thousand square foot lot, so four thousand less forty thousand, thirty-six thousand. You guys have forty-two, six forty-three, so really, um.
I was just trying to get.
No, I understand, and, and no.
I'll let you finish. I was trying to get percentage of compliance. If you're looking for a, a compliance percent, we're, we're at eighty-five, you're trying to get to a hundred percent compliance, and so we're at eighty-five percent compliance. So if you're taking the actual square footage out of it and looking for percentage of compliance, that's how I just, from what the numbers she just gave me, that's how I would have calculated it.
And I, I, and I took it a little bit, because that's the beauty of math. I mean, you can, you can, you can massage the numbers any way you want, depending on what you want, how you want to spin it, right? But the way I look at it is that you, your requirement, you had, you can have, you couldn't have more than forty-two hundred sixty-four.
Right.
Feet.
Yep.
You have eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. So if you subtracted those two, you'd come up with seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two. That's what you are over.
Yep.
Right? After all, everything's said and done, you're still seventy-five hundred square feet more wetlands than what's required, than, than your requirement. So that seventy-five hundred, if you took the forty-two hundred as just your basis point, that's, that's a hundred percent, right?
Yep.
You add another forty-two hundred on top of that, you're almost at two hundred percent, which is really, you're at a hundred and, to me, if you look at it this way, you're way over what you should be on the wetlands. Listen, I, I'm here to help you. I want to help you guys, and I try to, I, I, we always try to help people. That's our job. But we also have to interpret the bylaw and say.
Right.
Does it make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah. This is not easy. I, I understand that. I'm trying to look at it from how far is the builder off to sell this property to develop it, because as Heather said, right now, it's, it's sitting there vacant. My sister's been paying taxes, and my brother's been paying taxes on a vacant piece of property that they assumed at some point would be developable. And, and, you know, she's trying to close the estate, because she's in her seventies and she doesn't have any use for this property, and we're trying to allot somebody who has interest in building some housing for the town of Lunenburg and trying to, to do it. So that's why we're coming to the board for, for relief. And I'm not trying to spin numbers at you.
No, 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 and listen, I mean, thank you.
I'm trying to figure out how far away.
Yeah, yeah. Me too.
We are. And, you know, and once, and once again, the, the, the wetlands are in the back corner of this property, and the site plan shows that the, the, the build can be put in the middle of the property with enough area in the front to make it accessible. But I know there are wetlands regulations, and Mr. Dubois, you had a great question. Is this from the Wetlands Protectin- Protection Act, or is this a bylaw? But the board does have the power to, to discuss it and grant it, so, thank you.
It was mentioned that, um, Mr. Gravel went to the town council and he indicated the board can vary the wetland percent under special permit for dimensional variations. So, I, that's a direct mail from that response. Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
Hi, my name's Caitlin Alt, also from five twenty-four, New West Townsend Road. Um, I happen to be Phil's wife and also, um, the agent working, representing the buyer of the land. So a couple of things. The betterment, according to the tax assessor, started in two thousand and five. So I have a question, if that lot wasn't buildable at that time in the town's eyes, as why there would be a betterment on it? Um, because I think that unfortunately, the seller is in a situation where there's a lot of things that have stacked against them. I know in real estate, people kind of bank on this, you know, as, as an investment for their future and then count that into their retirement planning. So for them to be at this point and realizing it's not a buildable lot, or there's potential that it won't be buildable, you know, where they've been paying taxes, they've been paying a betterment, it puts them in a hardship, um, that's really through no fault of their own. So the question that I would have is when they started enforcing the common ownership. So at what point in time, you know, did that change? Is there something that they could have done to protect their right to build this? Does anybody know when that, when that, um, was put into place?
I can't answer that question for you, thank you. Um, even though I have the deeds, the copy of the deed, tax papers, but from similar time period, but.
Okay. Yeah, it's just an unfortunate thing, because it's like, you know, the, the change of, or could there have been a change of ownership? If they had transferred it into a single family member's name instead of both of their names, would that have changed the outcome of this? You know, the betterment is definitely something that is a financial burden on anybody. Through no choice of their own, it's just came about, and you don't have the choice to not opt into it. Um, so that is definitely, you know, something that was placed on their shoulders. And then the other question that I have is, you know, we are in a historically wet year. Had this been last year, would we be having a different conversation right now? Or the year before, or two years from now? You know, what is the, the, really just historically very, like, a lot more rain? How has that affected what we're looking at today? Um, the other thing is, there's been, three houses in the past three years have been built on significantly smaller lots. So there's the woodland one that we talked about, which was twenty-two thousand square feet. There's also fifty Spring Street, that was only eighteen thousand square feet. And then, um, forty-four Pier Street, only five thousand square feet. Those are only the lots that were on MLS, too. So there could be more that we're not seeing, just based on a surface level search, but if we dug into the public record, you know, there are probably more that didn't go, you know, up on a public platform like that for us to easily search. So those are just things that I think that should be taken into consideration. So those are just things that I think that should be taken into consideration um, because it's really not fair to the seller, um, to be put in this position after, after doing, you know, everything that they were supposed to, paying taxes, paying the betterment. And now, you know, through no fault of their own, they have no control over the situation. Yeah.
All right. So you're questioning the loss of grandfathering, a sys- situation for historically wetlands and the question of the amount of small, substandard properties being built on in the town.
And also the timing of the betterment is just the, the question of like, if it wasn't a buildable lot at that point in time, why were they paying the betterment? If the, from the town's eyes in two thousand and five, when that betterment was assessed, if it wasn't buildable, so why, why, why was that forced on them if that's the case?
Are you asking for a continuance or a?
No, I'm just, I was just wondering if there's any answers, you know, available.
Uh, without asking counsel or the building inspector, I would say we don't have the answers um, for a, a lot of those. Uh, and it, it would be fair to make any assumptions, unfair to make any assumptions along those lines. Um.
I would say, Jim, that, I mean, we rely on the experts. So the building inspector gives us his interpretation of not, no longer grandfathered. And then, you know, we rely on the wetlands expert to tell us how much wetlands is there.
Right.
So, you know, the applicant's, um, consultant gave us the eleven thousand eight hundred. So that, that came from, you know, and I, and again, I, I'm not going to question someone who's got a professional engineer.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, is, is that, could that change over time? You know, is that relative to the, the conditions that we've been having environmentally?
I don't know the answer.
We don't know. Um, I do know that after what, um, if we approve this, both of these, uh, as one, um, it has to go to the conservation commission, period. And they would have to go through any of the other things that they need to do to decide proximity of everything, so.
Oh, and one more comment. The, the duplex is a by right use, so it's not.
Right.
Asking for additional. It's something that's already, and it's in keeping in with characteristics of that neighborhood as well.
I asked that quite similar type of question this afternoon of the building inspector. And they said, you know, if you built a single family home, you're probably going to have a very large single family home with, um, extra cars, so you're going to have the same situation.
Right. Yeah, it's the same probably square footage.
Cars affecting the driveway and access onto Mass Ave. So, um.
Okay, well.
I don't, uh, where we go, uh, it's your choice, basically, uh, from where. Their choice, uh, where we go from here. Um, does anyone else have any other comments or questions? Is, are there any others? Or are there any others from the audience that would like to say anything or?
I guess I would just mention that based on the timeline that I've been given today, they lost the grandfather in nineteen ninety-seven. Or nineteen ninety-seven or eighteen months, thirteen months, whatever that was. And then they started charging him the betterment eight years later.
Right.
Which doesn't really feel, doesn't rub me the right way. I would have hoped maybe at that time they would have been told in two thousand and five, as the sewers going by, no, you can't have it because that's not a buildable lot. Um, but again, that's just me thinking out loud as, as far as that timeline goes.
Okay.
So if, so if that ten percent requirement is enforced forever, that piece of land is worthless.
Nothing.
Unless they can get some land from somebody else and make up that.
Create one lot or something like that.
Yeah.
But otherwise, they suffer a hardship in my mind.
If there aren't any other questions or comments from anyone, I'd ask for a motion to, one way or you'd like, sure.
Just by going back to like the math and, and just to reiterate everything, we're asking for a dimensional variation, a special permit for, to go from one twenty-five to one seventy-five, so fifty feet. And also, we're over the ten percent that's allowed to seventeen percent. The math is seventeen percent. We're, we're at seventeen percent of the lot. We're asking, I'm sorry, we're at twenty-three percent. We're asking, we're asking for the seventeen percent.
Right.
Variation.
That's correct.
And the grandfathered, I, I believe it's a non-grandfathered lot. From our research, we've had attorneys look at it, talked to the building inspector and all like that. So that's out. And if it was a grandfathered lot, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right.
So we're having this, yeah, we're having this conversation. We're looking for fifty feet for the lot width. In the neighborhood, there's lots up and down the street that are created before nineteen seventy-one that have one twenty-five, one fifty feet, doesn't have the one seventy-five. And now we have the variation. But, and the other thing you said, Mr. Jim, we will be going in front of the wetlands if this goes forward and we are outside of any type of special permit variation, asking of their special, um, guidance. We are within a hundred feet. We're going to file a notice of intent, but we're not within the fifty feet, no disturb. So it's not like we're asking them to do any favors. We're doing by right, we have to just tell them we're within one hundred feet, we're working in there. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. A motion? If not, I'll, uh, cut off all debate, public and, um, over the Zoom. Um, are there, could I entertain a motion? Again, Hans has recused himself from voting, so there's only.
Can, can I just?
Sure.
Can I say something again?
Sure.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, I was also trying to.
I, I just want to make it.
Man Zoom.
To everyone.
So are we talking about twenty-three percent? So I, I feel like that number's changed a couple of times now. I, I, I think I kind of figured out the.
The, the total amount is twenty-three percent period. And the allowable is ten. So there's a difference of thirteen percent. And they're asking for a variance.
Seventeen.
Of, um, seventeen percent.
Of the wetlands.
Of the variance.
Okay.
I don't know if that math is correct. I, I just, I mean, I, I mean, personally, if I was voting, I'd make a motion to deny it because they don't have the ten percent. They have way more than the ten percent that they have for wetlands. And I understand that it's, uh, you know, you've been paying taxes, you know, you think it's a developable, uh, property. Shame on us if that's the town, but, you know, you've got some strikes against you, but that's me. I'm interpreting the bylaw. I know it's a tough decision. We're here to interpret the bylaw. The bylaw says you can't have more than ten percent. The bylaw says you have to have a hundred and seventy-five. You don't, you don't, you're, you're asking for twenty-something percent on one twenty-eight percent on the, on the, through the lot width and much more than seventeen percent on the wetlands.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, again, I'll ask for a motion.
Now, if we, so i- if it is the twenty-three percent like the building inspector says, and it turns out it is a number much higher, I mean, obviously that, if we say twenty-three.
These are his figures.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we say, yes, we'll grant you a permit for twenty-three percent and it's much higher like your math is saying, I mean, that does.
Well, we're going by.
You're limited to arms.
I think more than percentages, which square footage will, um, like they say.
So if it's square footage, there's still eight thousand square feet off.
Yeah.
Wetlands. Right? They, they, they require, they're required to have thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine square feet of non-wetlands. They have thirty thousand eight hundred and seventeen. So it's almost a difference of seven thousand, yeah, it's seven thousand five hundred and sixty-two. But they're over on top of the four thousand that they're given.
So I'm saying, if, if we were going to grant and we, we would obviously say a number. So if we said, yes, we'll give you the seventeen percent of relief, then that's what it can be, correct? Like.
That's what it is.
If all the numbers are.
That's what it is.
Yeah, okay.
And I think what you're saying is if that number comes out more.
Like, you are contesting that. So if that does come out more, that is protected by saying you could only do seventeen percent.
I think it's a slippery slope myself, but.
Yeah, there's not much of, it's.
Yeah, and I guess I would say on the wetlands, I mean, he said he spoke as a, as a citizen, but we did have a, somebody involved in wetlands.
Could I have a motion?
I think.
Accept or deny?
I think because the applicant has not yet purchased the property and is still owned by this family. And I think to deny it is a hardship on that family. That is a rather unique situation since the property's apparently been in the family for a long time. I would make a motion that we approve the request.
Thank you.
I'll second that and add that it's for the seventeen percent of relief on wetlands and what was the lot width?
Fifty percent on lot width.
Fifty.
Fifty feet.
Of lot width.
Fifty-two, fifty feet on lot width.
Bokish, sorry, a motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. With that made, um, the special permit and for lot width and ver- dimensional variation for wetlands is granted with the contingency that the petitioner compiles with all licenses, regulations, statutes and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permitting or permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Non-compliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party aggrieved by the board's decision may appeal to the Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded with the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. This special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And that's all. May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And good luck with your process.
Recording stopped.